Oh, I wouldn't.
Nope.
I hope you have it down there.
You're on. Perfect time, most good time.
Almost.
Yeah, it was almost.
So you want to start on the MBH fund is that what you want to start on or would?
We've got the Cuban Bridge Fund as first for additional appropriation.
Okay, I'd like to ask for additional appropriation for these $300,000 for bridge inspection, $175,000 for repair and maintenance, $50,000 for Bridge 32, and $200,000 for additional for Bridge 110 and 102. Both of these three last projects are projects we're just starting design work on and right away, et cetera. The $300,000 for the start of the bridge inspection started the 1st of September. We'll do month of September in October, and then we'll pay the whole bill, and then we'll get reimbursed 80% of that back on the federal government, so.
When do you see that being done? The reimbursement in 2026 or yeah, this year?
Uh, yeah, this year.
Okay.
Yeah, because we direct deposit into the consulting firm so we can get the money. We have to show that we paid it, and we can get that sent to the state faster, get reimbursed in front of it.
So this Bridge 32, 102, and 110, is that part of a matching program? Is any part of those part of the matching?
Uh, yeah, we're trying to get it ready so that when we do bid it, then we'll be able to get community crossing grant is what our progress is, so.
When would you anticipate these would start?
Um, excuse me, probably not till 2026 or 2027. We have to get all the proper permitting and design and right-of-way purchase before we can go to bid, so.
I assume the advertising has been done?
Yes.
Correct. Looking at the operating balance, it looked like there was enough in the operating balance to cover the $925,000 total, what I saw. Is 32 just a smaller bridge?
Uh, actually, it's a bridge that we're looking change into a big culvert pipe, so it'll reduce the amount, save a little money that way, so.
Chair would entertain a motion on the additional appropriation for the Cuban Bridge Fund 1135? All right, thank you, Mr. Cudell.
Second, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley, for the second. Any questions or further discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a transfer appropriation MBH Fund 1176.
Yes, this is $1,000 from utilities to CDL Alcohol and Drug Program that we had. Kind of a little bit different on that, but we have to get somebody tested there each quarter to be compliant with the federal laws, so we just need to transfer some money to make it through the year.
And then you also have another appropriation as well?
Yes.
Actually, it's a transfer, I'm sorry.
Transfer for the new position that was created for the Assistant Superintendent, Highway Superintendent. We'd like to transfer $15,850 out of Truck Driver's Position. If you remember right, we changed that position to that position, so we'd like to transfer that money out to pay for the rest of that out of this year's budget.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding those two transfers. All right, thank you, Mr. Lemming. Second. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd say it's going to the line for superintendent. Is there a separate line for the Assistant Superintendent position or not?
Yes.
I've heard.
It's 12615. There is a separate line for that. It will, it'll need to be updated on the budget worksheet because I put the wrong number on it, so.
We're covered there.
Yes, it's tougher.
I noticed that.
Yeah.
Question. Any other questions from the council? Anything from the public regarding this transfer? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
One other thing, if I could bring up that real quickly here.
All right.
This is, the county would like to apply for community crossing grant. Starts October 1st to October 31st, and it's basically for next year's projects. This is just saying that we'll have the money to back up a project, our 50% match. So right now, we're planning on applying for one bridge project and then some paving project. I've already got the commissioners to sign off saying they would help back it. Just need your approval for financial commitment letter and have to have the president sign if you guys would like to participate in these projects.
You know how much it would be?
Uh, we can go up to a million dollars. So whether it comes out of the Bridge Fund or the MBH Fund to make our match, we've always done it in the past, so.
So basically, you're saying 10-1, 2025 to 10-31, 2026?
Is when they accept the applications.
Or is it just this year?
This is October.
Okay, the end of October?
Yeah, and then they, they award it usually the 1st of January, the state does, and then we'll have to bid the projects out and everything else within three months.
I would move for approval. All right, thank you, Mr. McQuarrie.
I'll let you sign off.
Okay, all right.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. A motion in a second. To agree to be a part of the Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund. Any other questions from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. There you go. Next on our agenda, we have Grant County Veterans Services.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I feel kind of ashamed because I don't have a large sum of money to ask for, but I've got two things I'm requesting a transfer of funds on from the salaries account to the supplies fund. One is for a new desk and side table in our volunteers' office. The one we have there, I think, is from the original construction of this building. It's starting to fall apart. So we got a quote for that one for 191760 for a desk with side table, and then we're asking to replace our half-size refrigerator with a full-size refrigerator. We've got a quote from Lowe's for one on sale for $536, so total of those two items would be $24,5360. And that again is just a transfer of funds from salaries to supplies. You may not know that, but my actual salary paid is lower than the budget salary for my position, so we've got a little bit of extra money available in our budget for that. Entertain any questions?
Got questions, Chair would entertain a motion regarding this transfer of funds.
Second, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McQuarrie. Second, any questions, comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Grant County Health Department. Dr. Brinker Woods.
I'm going to present this on behalf of Dr. Woods tonight.
Yes.
The Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant has been awarded again this year in the amount of $20,000, and I'm just asking that you appropriate $18,470 into salaries and $1,530 into Social Security and Medicare for our public health coordinator. I'm sorry, our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. This is a June to July grant. It's 100% reimbursed. And then I also, based two of my requests, he's been working since July 1st without pay, and I'm just asking that we retro that back to July 1st.
The grant pays that?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not asking County General? Chair would entertain a motion regarding this request.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cudell.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions, comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinance modifying local income tax rates. This is the public hearing portion on this. This would, I don't know how much I need to read about it. I think it was advertised.
Yes.
Okay, so this would be a correctional rehabilitation facility allocation of 0.2%, which would basically be a funding of a new jail, should we move forward with a new jail. At this point, we don't yet have the exact amount of what that project could be or would be. We're still waiting on those designs.
Yeah, I think in light of the fact that we are not really, I guess, up to speed yet as far as what that's going to entail from the professionals that are working on the project and the commissioners as far as their recommendation base, I would say that we probably would table this and act on this or re-entertain the public hearing and any action in our October 15th meeting.
Okay.
We do have, I think, a special meeting that we're looking to schedule for October the 14th that would entail a detailed presentation of what the project is going to be presented to us is, as well as any thoughts from the commissioners and recommendations as far as what they want to see us consider. We had a conversation, really it was a phone teams meeting. I was part of that last week, and they hope to get this information no later than October 10th for us to have in hand to be prepared for an October 14th meeting. If they get it sooner, they'll get it to us sooner. But right now, and I expressed kind of some disappointment at the fact it wasn't ready yet. We would hope to have it before now, but we're assured that by October 10th it'll be done, and we should have it no later than that date.
Okay.
Okay. And of course, I expressed to them that time is becoming an issue because we need to make sure we have our decision as a council whether we're going to go forward with this lit change to the DLGF no later than October 31st, so we have to act on that.
At that meeting?
Well, and I guess, Dave, question for you, if we chose to, well, we're just going to talk about it on the 14th, get the presentation, give us time to think about it, for the 15th then was when we actually would be taking action if we chose to. That's the best plan now. You have to make sure we get scheduled to that October 14th, and that would be a joint session with us and the commissioners.
Basically, we will re-advertise and redo this for that.
But I don't think we have to do that because you've already advertised.
Yeah, it's advertised, just a motion to table till the 15th is.
It'll just carry forward to that date, so I would move that we table it until October 15th.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McQuarrie.
It would be the public hearing and any action that we choose to make at that time.
Okay. So a motion to table the ordinance modifying local income tax rates to October the 15th meeting. We have a motion by Mr. McQuarrie. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? I'm sure if anybody came in light of this. Appears to be none. All in favor of tabling this until October the 15th meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President, do you want to go ahead and consider a motion to set the meeting to the 14th joint meeting also?
The meeting for the joint session?
Yeah, to receive the information.
Yes, if we need to have a motion to do that for a special meeting? You think we do? Okay.
14th.
A special meeting October 14th?
On a Tuesday at 6:00 p.m.
I guess what the commissioners are planning.
I think so.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion regarding a special meeting on October 14th at 6:00 p.m., which would be a joint meeting with the commissioners, hopefully to discuss this jail project.
If we can't get it discussed that night, we're in trouble, so.
Yes, I would agree.
And like I say, hopefully you'll have the information in hand prior to that, by the 10th is when they expect that to us.
Did you ask for one? Yes, I did. All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions or comments regarding that special meeting with the commissioners on October the 14th at 6:00 p.m. from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are set for that meeting with the commissioners. Hopefully, they'll have our information for us. Next on our agenda is Grant County Auditor.
Yes, I was tasked with fixing a negative balance in a fund. I had to do a five-year research to determine what errors have been taking place, and I have given you a list of funds and amounts that will fix this error. This negative balance goes back way further than five years, but the State Board of Accounts is accepting the five-year research that I did. So I don't know if you want me to go through and tell you what funds and amounts.
I think you got it in the paper here.
Yes, you have a list of all the errors that I found along with the funds that it has affected.
So the errors just because of a transfer in and out, a transfer of it, managed what needed to be.
Yeah, there were receipts that were receipted into the incorrect fund. There were claims that were paid out of the incorrect fund. This is just correcting one of those errors.
Took a little bit of time.
That's why it's taken me two years. I tried to do it in between my, you know, downtime.
You might just note what funds are involved with all the detail, just note the funds.
There were five funds that were affected. General Fund was one, Tax Sill Redemption Fund was the one that carried the negative balance. It should be just an in-and-out fund. It never should really have a negative or a positive balance, but it did. The Tax Certificate Sale Fund, the Supplemental Public Defender Services Fund, and the Ineligible Homestead Fund are the funds that were affected.
Does Chair would entertain a motion for all of those funds?
All members of the jail, I'll move to approve the transfers to correct those errors.
All right, thank you, Mr. McQuarrie.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Comments, questions, further discussion from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next, what I was going to do is skip down to the old business to get that done, and then we'll skip back up to Senator Township Trustee, Ms. Kane. So Grant County IT Marcus Elliott? I thought he was here.
He probably wasn't ready yet.
Oh, he's not ready yet?
Boy, I thought he was going to skip.
Oh, okay.
I think he's up for one.
Okay. Okay. I guess we can do him after this, then. And then we also have library appointment for Van Buren Public Library Board. This is just a request that comes when those offices expire. Just the one candidate? Yes, to my knowledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for that. I didn't.
That's all right. We'll do this motion on the library appointment board, and then we'll come back to you. Yep. All right, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cudell. A motion in a second. Is the name on here? I didn't see the name. I did not see the name on here, and I was looking for that myself, and.
I can find the email that might have been help come out, so I'll find it tomorrow.
Yep. We're basically doing the approval. She emailed the name, and I'm not seeing it on here. So we're emailing her recommendation.
August through, August 25 through 29, right?
Four years? Yes, it is. That's correct. We have a motion in a second. Any further questions, comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Elliott? Yes.
I apologize for that, gentlemen. I didn't realize I was getting moved up.
Yeah.
All right, so just to kind of give you an update, so the original three additional appropriations, I was able to work with the commissioners, Angie, and we got all that sorted out. So the only item or additional preparation I'm bringing today is for the court's video systems. So just kind of a recap, we worked with Chris Cunningham, and we got a grant, and we were able to acquire the equipment. So now we're just basically needing to buy the software and the services to get that equipment installed.
So that it would be operational?
Correct, yeah, because it's just set up in our office right now.
This is to replace, I'll say, old equipment that's come out and needed?
Correct, so a lot of the video, all the video systems they got put in in 2015, 2016 is like one of the first projects I got put into when I got hired in, so. So, yeah, it's, they're, they're up there.
So the amount you're asking is $62,600?
Mm-hmm, correct. So the grand total that they have on their, the sales agreement thing was $61,899.17.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding this request, and hopefully this would limit the number of inmates then who are being taken over from the jail to basically the courthouse for hearings in that there are several hearings, I believe, that they can do via video, but there are some that do have to be done in person.
Yeah, they have some weird rules where some of them have to be done in person, and they do have to walk them over there. With this system, we'll have some extra licenses. They make you buy them and tax it 10. So we'll have about four extra, so next year, if we decide, you know, with the new jail facility, if that project comes to fruition, we'll have licenses for that to put systems in there as well. Is the current system still operational? So some of them are working and some of them are not, so some of them we've had to go in and put in laptops with the phone system and video conferencing software just to keep it, just to keep them going. So it's just not the most optimal thing because before they would just have a little touch panel, and they did everything off that. How many systems are there total? So right now, there are six in the courtrooms, and then there's a few others in, in the jail. There's one for public defenders purchased. There's one in the, I think it's, I'm trying to think here, it's Community Corrections. They have one, it's a CART system. That was, those are relatively newer because they bought them with COVID funds and stuff like that. So I would say we have the six, five for the courts, and there's one in the jail that the courts use to communicate back and forth. Then there's two for Community Corrections probation, and then there's one for public defenders.
This is one where I've already received a call from a member of the judiciary asking if this was, you know, done or not yet, and I said, no, not yet. Hopeful. It did seem getting a $40,000 grant to purchase the equipment with already having the approval to, for the contractual services that you can actually operate the equipment seems out of order, but we are here where we're at.
When we talked last time, we kind of tabled this to make sure some questions could be answered. Greg, did you have a chance to talk with the commissioners or Marcus at all? I mean, do you have any other questions that you did not get answered, or are you satisfied?
I, I guess it's, we are where we're at. The problem was when I did talk to one member of the judiciary who was familiar with this, he said, well, you'd actually have to, if the equipment's not returnable, you'd have to pay back the grant of $40,000. But they would like to have the equipment.
Yeah, I guess from my standpoint, I felt okay even last time from the standpoint of this replacing outdated, your 10-year-old technology. I'm sure it's probably reached into its life as far as being usable in some kind of a good manner. So I'm okay with the request. I mean, obviously, some of the timing could have been better.
Yes.
Or what they did.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, and I won't do it that way again, so, no, it's, like I said, I'll be sure to work with you gentlemen next time if there's, you know, we're able to get a portion of it covered and there's another portion that's not, well, I can come to you, gentlemen, before I proceed with it.
Appreciate it.
Just so everybody's better remember that $62,600 is an additional appropriation on general fund that we don't have in our current numbers, so it's one of those adjustments that we'll have to consider as you look at balance from that point forward.
Yes. So if we don't approve it, we'll potentially lose $40,000 worth of equipment.
Right.
It's not a comfortable spot to be in.
No. Actually paying the cash back.
Cash back, yeah. Seems to make more sense to just create an additional 62 to finish it out, but. So, Mr. McQuarrie, is that a motion then to approve?
If you're ready for a motion, I will make that as a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. McQuarrie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lemming. Any questions or comments from council? Anything from the public regarding that? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
And then letter C under Old Business, 2026, Grant County Outstanding Budget Item Review, which I think, Mr. McQuarrie, you got signed.
Yeah, no, I emailed, I think, copies of the, I'll say, all the notes I had through budget process and the budget hearing process, and there's like 22 items to consider, and normally we would take care of those when we meet on October the 1st, and my thought to you is if we have something else on the agenda to deal with tonight, we can wait till October 1st to deal with those. But if there's something you want to deal with now, tonight, we can do that. But obviously, those are items, and some can be lumped together, and some are, you know, totally separate from each other, but anyway, those are things that, you know, as we go through the budget process, there are a lot of items that you have to tie up at the end. Those are items that we'll have to address in some manner, either yes or no, as we finalize the budget. And we'd want to at least have those done on our meeting. And we want to at least have those done on our meeting of October first, so that Angie can have the budget finalized and ready for us on the fifteenth. That includes those items.
All right.
Okay? If you have any question, I'd be glad to answer those. But hopefully, my notes kind of tell you what we're talking about. You can always refer back to the budget sheets in our notebook as well, but it should have a summary of each of those items in there, in red. The items that we're talking about are the ones in red throughout the document.
And thank you for that summary. Appreciate that. Maybe, yeah, we'll address it at our special meeting on Wednesday, October first. Next item on our agenda is under New Business, and that would be the Senator Township Trustee, Deb King.
Good evening, President, Councilmembers. I believe that you received some information from our attorney. It is, if you don't have, I have extra copies. Everybody needs it. I've written out my intro statement, as this subject is really close to my heart. And I fear that I would go on and on and on if I just did, if I just talked. So respect of all that are gathered here, please allow me to read what is on my heart and what I desire to express and impress to you. As I come before you, both with a heavy heart and any determines here, since July ninth, Senator Township has been entrusted by court order with the full ownership and administration of the IWF Estates of Serenity Cemetery. This is not a simple matter of land or property. It's a sacred responsibility to care for those that came before us, our neighbors, our veterans, our teachers, our parents, and the generation who built Grant County. As the President and City Council stated in the meeting with City Council, those were once taxpayers. They lived here, they raised their families here, they shopped in our stores, their childrens attended our schools. Even in death, they remain part of our community. It is our duty, yours and mine, to ensure they are treated with dignity and respect. So the current challenge is that for decades, the cemetery suffered from neglect and even desecration due to the inability of Marion Cemetery Corporation to provide proper care. Families walked through weeds taller than their knees, unable to find headstones of their loved ones. Mausoleums fell into disrepair, monuments crumbled, and hundreds of acres became overgrown. Since July, I have worked tirelessly with my team to change that with the help of grass groomers who employ, who also employ men from sober living homes, along with other men. I have seen hope returned to these grounds. These men take on the work as a personal mission, and I see that every day. They are restoring not just the cemetery, but their own dignity as they honor the lives of thousands buried there. But maintaining a hundred grounds with over fifty thousand headstones, multiple monuments, and mausoleums is not a task I can shoulder alone. It requires an army, and it requires resources. My goal is simple, yet ambitious. A perpetual care fund is large enough to generate the annual interest necessary for long-term maintenance, preservation, and emergency needs. Long-term, the target minimum fund is three million. Long-term goal is six million. With this trust, we will secure the cemetery's future annual long care monument restoration, tree removal, the mausoleum repair. To give you perspective, the largest mausoleum alone carries a projected restoration cost of three to six million due to water damage, broken marble, structural needs. Long care estimates for 2026 ranges from one hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred upwards to two hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred. To date, we have three hundred thousand from the city of Marion, three hundred thousand already in the trust fund. Today, I'm asking you to add three hundred thousand from Grant County. Together, these funds will give us a strong foundation, providing both immediate maintenance support and the monument and momentum in our capital campaign. Why support from the county? Why does it matter? This is not just about trustee responsibility or city pride. It's about county heritage. The people buried here are not simply Marion residents, they're Grant County residents. His family still live both here and cross the nation. Their legacy is our shared responsibility. Taxpayers once gave of their resources during their lifetime. They built the economy we still enjoy. Can we do any lesson to honor them now? This is a one-time funding, and it is not charity. It's an investment in respect, in history, in dignity, and in the future, Grant County's ability to maintain one of its most sacred grounds. I stand before you proud of the progress we've made in just a few short months. The grounds are being restored, families are finding comfort again, and dignity being returned to those who have been gone, but not forgotten. But I cannot do this alone. As I said, it takes a team, an army, and the commitment of the entire county. I ask you to partner with me, to be part of this work, rest of duration, and remembrance. With your help, we can ensure that the IWF Estates of Serenity Cemetery is not a place of neglect, but a place of beauty, reverence, and pride for generations to come. Let us honor the voices of the living who ask only for the respect of their loved ones. Let us honor the silent voices of the deceased who gave us this county that we call home. And as example of those realizing and experiencing the transformation, I have an email from a gentleman. It says, earlier this summer, I just received it Sunday, earlier this summer, I saw some local news coverage of the court conditions at the Estates of Serenity. I made a trip down to Marion a couple of weeks ago to check on my grandparents and graves. I want to thank you for any and all action you took to get the cemetery back in good condition. It really looks better than I've seen it in twenty years. The grass has been mowed, my family's plots are well-tended. Thank you. And just last week, we had a carload of sisters that came from multiple states. They came all together. They were dressed in bib overalls and T-shirts and hats and scarves on their heads. And they came in the office because they were trying to find an infant family member, and so we helped them find that. And they apologized for the way they were dressed. They said, well, we brought our cutting shears and our weed eaters, because we've always had to do that every year. And they said, we could not believe it when we drove on the grounds, and there is nothing to have to take care of. So I respectfully and passionately and from my heart, asking, please, please help me in building this fund, getting a jumpstart on giving it, giving, it will allow me to start and have a perpetual fund that will be able to start and interest and keep growing and keep growing. And I know one of the questions is that, well, how much of the cemetery is in the county? So I have, I have my chief police from my, from Senator Township Fire Department go out there with me with his GPS on his, on his county emergency phone. All right, so the front picture is the same map. It's just on the left side, it's a little blown up, a little bit easier and closer for you to see. So the highlighted part is the county, and you'll see that in, there's a little pink box that's on the north side of Central Avenue. That is part of the old, part of this, which we call the old cemetery. And the other is the whole, the whole other section across the other, on the north, I'm sorry, north side is the smaller part, and then south side is the larger part. And that includes the most recent headstones, the mausoleum, the largest mausoleum in my pet cemetery. On the back side, the yellow is the county fire coverage. And again, it's kind of a little blown up on the left-hand side, and you'll see where it includes, it includes that. So that is zoomed in. So that shows and gives you a good picture of that, just as much as in the city as in the county. Don't take any questions you may have.
Yeah, I know, I've seen, you know, quite a change, because obviously, it was not, not well cared for at all. And it's been quite a difference that you've made. I mean, there's no doubt. And that's with the cleanup efforts, and then even with all of the work that you've done, going the legal route, you know, obviously, a lot, a lot of effort there. The, the part that I struggle with, and that's why it's under here as New Business, I really consider it a new request, because I know there was some discussion last year at a Commissioner's meeting about possibly providing funds to the cemetery. No official vote, approval, or commitment was ever performed for that. And so one person can't really make that promise or commitment. It would take the council, such as we're here tonight, to vote, and it would take at least four of us to vote to approve that, to give those funds.
At the time, I came before the Commissioner and the County Council to the mind meeting, yes, that was before the elections. I was on the designated recipient list for ARBA. That's how confident everybody felt at that time, that it was important to give me the three hundred thousand. And then, because the court was delayed multiple times on the defendants' act part, I was not able to accomplish this in twenty-four. And at a Commissioner's meeting, it was stated, and one of, a prior Councilmember was there and affirmed that, once the legal stuff gets over, we will help you find the funds. I couldn't, I would not have, I couldn't even attempt it to pursue this without that promise, because there's no way I can, we all know the history of what happened out there. Kurt Duffy embezzled seven million dollars. So there's, there's nothing in the funds. I have the intuition, I have the push, I have the, I have the desire to do the capital campaign to get money for this cemetery. It takes, it takes somebody that had, that's who they are, and that's who I am. When taking this on just for fun, I took this on because it's in my, it's in me. That's who I am. And I'm just, I'm asking, please, please don't just listen to me. I, multiple times, I have people that call me and stop me. I can't go out in public anywhere without somebody thanking me. I had, I had a pastor drive on to the grounds with tears in his eyes, couldn't even hardly get the words out, and just said, thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Kane, when did you start pursuing this?
I started working back in May of twenty-four. And I originally had started trying to work with the manager of the Estates of Serenity, and he was, he was not very cooperative. And then when I started to try and find funds for him, he hired a lawyer, and that didn't give me a choice but to hire a lawyer. I don't know why. And that's how, that's how it ended up illegal, because we couldn't get anywhere.
So when you assumed this property, was it in the domain to you? Was there any funds that came with that in the previous year?
So I have my, I'm in legal counsel online. So I'm, there is, there is a perpetual fund. So, and there is, there's like four accounts. There's a checking account, there's a saving account, there's a money market account, and there's a perpetual fund and pre-arranged account. So the perpetual fund is just a little over three hundred thousand. The checking account was like four thousand. There's like fifty dollars in the money market, and a little bit over that in a savings account.
And those were funds that were part of the interdomain?
Yes.
Given to you from the previous year?
And I already have the bank, I mean, I already have the bank documents that transferred those accounts to myself.
When you started pursuing it, what was your plan to be able to fund it?
The same thing was that I'm on grants, private funding. There's, there's DNR, there's Arbor Grants, there's, 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 the cemetery is not a, not on the historical register, if I'd like it to be, but I need to also walk softly on that, because there's a lot of restrictions on that. And so, but there's, there's also some other grants. There's Indian Wesleyan, I have the grant writer that's working with me. In fact, I'm meeting with him on Friday. And there's some other grant writers that have offered to help, and so I'm meeting with two of those next week.
Deb, who did you say gave you this information on the boundaries?
So my, my chief from the Senator Township Fire Department, we got in, we, we went through it, minus GPS, and rode that.
So what was it pulling from? You say you got on your GPS and rode? Do you know where? I'm, I'm looking at Elevate, and I need somebody maybe that can understand these boundaries.
Jason's online, if you mind if he jumps in there, because he can explain it a lot more, better than I can.
And if he can, because like I said, I'm looking on Elevate, and if I'm looking at the city boundary, then it contradicts what this, what this shows, so.
Yeah, because I always thought that west of Central Avenue was city, and east of it was county.
Should show taxing this.
Well, okay, so you can pull up different, there's like four different parcels, and There's four different parcels, which means different addresses.
Right.
And the addresses, okay, so if it, in looking at it on the paperwork, the addresses are not, and then something I'm working with Jason Miller, he's doing my survey, and the addresses are, do show a little difference on the GPS, and I'm not sure why he's, he shows this is on there. But he had his phone, he had his phone, and I could see us driving in.
Yeah, goes on maps or something.
Yeah. And I could see what I was driving, and then each time that we hit the county, we pinpointed it, and that's how we pulled up the map. That's, he's, this way I can explain it, but I don't really understand it, and he does.
Sure. I'm gonna say, I'm looking at Elevate, which is our county.
Yeah, and Elevate on the county is, is not matching. In fact, that's what Jason Miller had in doing the survey. He's been, he's actually started the survey back in September of twenty-four, and he's still working on it, because he said, the survey that was done actually is taking thirty feet from the front, where the office sits, you know, where that bridge starts, to the railroad tracks. And if that is so, then I have almost two rows of people buried in the right way. And so he's gonna, he, and then he said, in the back corner, the lines, we might own property that we've never had access to. So he, he is, he said, it's, it's a mess, and that, you're right, Elevate, you can't, he said, I can't go by this. He's been out there physically walking and looking at, he said, because it is way off.
Yeah, I know you can't. I mean, it's with Elevate, the, the boundary lines aren't usually going to match up exactly. And it may be all. And it may be all off a few feet. But it's just saying, everything that you showed that is in county, Elevate says that this entire property here is in the, is in the city.
Yeah, no, it is in the county.
So Elevate is wrong.
Yeah. And that's what, that's what Rainey Miller says too.
So he says there's a survey, and something has been recorded with the county that says different than what this is.
Long, long, long time ago, he said, it's years. And it's not, not correct, and it wasn't a surveyor that did it. It's just somebody that wrote up this description, and there is another, but he's been, he's been getting all of that in.
This, I mean, I understand, you know, you're saying you have the need for $300,000. The struggle for our council would be, an example would be tonight, $700,000 to out-of-county inmates, which was not budgeted. So that's $700,000. Next year, we're, we've got $1,001,000 for out-of-county adults, and $600,000 for out-of-county juveniles, so that's 1.7 million. Earlier this year, we spent $200,000 for a referee court, trying to reduce our inmate jail population. That was not budgeted. And this may be letting the cat out of the bag, but we may be requested to spend another $75,000 per year for a new community service program, again, trying to get people out of the jail. But it could be putting people to community service as opposed to spending time in jail, which those people, maybe they could be out there to help clean up cemetery, or do whatever work that you might need done on a particular day. This might be a three or four-day-a-week crew that will certainly have different assignments. That would all be up to the sheriff to consider, and I might be out of line by bringing it up. But I'm just saying that these are a lot of the things that we have had this year that have come up. And this, and it, I didn't even take into account employee raise requests, regular payroll, utilities, repairs, and maintenance. And then capital improvements, our commissioners came to us, and they've got a wish list, I believe it's over $4 million, that's not appropriated, that they would like to see us spend money on. And it just, it seems like unfortunately, we don't have enough money to fulfill all of the requests. I wish we did. I know that. I've talked to you before, we had a meeting, and I told you, I will come out and I will help you talk about maybe needing a dump trailer, I've got one, come out and help. And I look at it as a community, something that we can work on to maintain it the way it should be maintained, to be respectful to those who are buried there. I certainly understand that, and the way it was maintained, it was not. And everything that you've done is just, it's been amazing.
I understand your volunteerism, but that doesn't take care of the daily, the daily work. And I've spoken with the sheriff, I actually talked with him on Monday, to say, is there a unique way that we can come up with a work crew? And he said, there's two problems. The staff, half-staff. Because it requires, it takes minimum five days of weed, minimum, and it takes three zero two mowers, and five weed-eaters. I mean, I have some of my, my weed-eaters, my lawn mower, my lawn care company, they realize really quickly, you're not going to take care of it with two mowers, so you've got a third. You're not going to take care of it with just three weed-eaters, so you've got five. And we're just very still there, and you keep it up. And he said, one, staff. And two, there's not enough men in the jail that say, yeah, I want to get out and work to fill a third work crew. They'd rather just sit in the jail cell. So what happens if the ones that do want to work are now gone? Then I'm stuck again. And what happens, I mean, you're talking about all these things that you have to help with, and the city did too. The city has the police department, the fires, all the fire departments, they have the parks. But they, they understood that these were prior, previous taxpayers. These are people that lived in Grant County, these are people that lived in the city. You wouldn't, there wouldn't be a school for your junior hires to go to if it wasn't from McCullough. And he's out there. There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be the, how the Ridley Tower, if it wasn't from McCullough, because he built that as the First National Bank, after you sold his jar company to Ball Jars. We have Brigadier Generals out there. We have generals, we have people that risk their lives for the county, for their city, for their state, for the country. This isn't just about, this isn't just about money, gentlemen, this isn't about taking care of the people that were there before us, that were here before us. And it's helping just one person that has a huge need, and a weight on her shoulders. And you have a big part of the, you have a big part of the county under your purview as a county council, with the cemetery, as a county council.
We have many cemeteries. And so the other thing too, that is out there, because we have received a call about another one not being maintained. And so if we give money to one, we have to give money probably to all, if they're not being maintained.
Now, that goes onto the trustee that's in that area, that's their responsibility.
Well, you're here. And so why wouldn't they come here too? I mean, you've done a lot, you've gone above and beyond of probably what another trustee might do, but they would probably come here as well.
They wouldn't. Again, I'll go back, I wouldn't have done that if I didn't have the promise from two elected officials just like you. You all are elected officials, it's in one body. That body gave me the promise.
That body did not give you.
The body didn't give you the promise, maybe an individual did, but that's different.
And they don't speak for the body. And I know you know that. Deb, here's the thing, I don't want to take away from the work that you have done and everybody else, because you've done an outstanding job. And this is a 20, this is a 20-plus-year problem. You know, and where was all of us in the past 20 years up until this point? And I almost feel like that if we do nothing, that somehow all of this is our fault. That's, that's the way that I'm feeling right now. And this is, this is a culmination of many years and many problems. And, and you mentioned earlier, with a trust fund that is depleted, that's not our fault. But we have, we have to remedy this somehow, and I get that. Where I'm struggling with, and where I'm at, is we have a $4.4 million request from the commissioners. We have, we have out-of-county inmates that's costing us $1.7 million a year. On top of this, and we haven't even considered pay raises for our own employees. Our request is higher than what our, what our cash balance is. Somehow, we have to go through and prioritize the county group, what we need to take care of for county-specific purposes and government funding. And I don't know how we come up with, if we are already short dollars to take care of all of these requests. How in the world do we justify finding the money? Or how do we even find the money when it's not there? That's our biggest challenge. I mean, it's not, it's not an easy decision on our part, believe me, but I mean, we are the fiscal body, and we have to, we have a duty and responsibility. And right now, our numbers aren't matching up.
I don't know how to.
It's hard, it's hard.
I don't think you guys anymore. I mean, it's, it's not me, it's everyone in this room.
I recognize that.
It's everybody that's outside of this room, it's the phone calls I receive, it's the people from this, all over this state. That's what this is for.
But how do we give the money that we don't have?
Well, listen, can we try and come up with a unique plan?
I'm curious, the $300,000, according to Marion, plus you have 300, another 300, so that's 900.
No, that's 600.
Like you said, you have $300,000 in a perpetual fund, so you're willing to add 600 to that, right?
No, I have 300 from this state.
Okay, that's part, oh, so 600. And lawn care costs are $195 to $240. How does that math work out?
That's, that's mine.
I think we're gonna be coming, you're gonna be coming back again.
No, this isn't one-time ask, so I can build that fund up, so that, so that I can build an interest up, and I have other, there's other funding that I'm going after, just take, it's gonna take, and grants, you know how long grants take? Grants take a long time. So I gotta have, I gotta have start money, I have, I need to have a solid base to have that time for grant monies. And then, you know, I'm going to private individuals, that takes time. I'm only one person too. And I'm trying to run a township, plus raise the funds, it's gonna take me a little bit of time. But I am going, I am going to do it, determined to do it. And I made a promise to Marion City Council, I made a promise to you, it's one time, it's one time. I take care of two other cemeteries, I do. You know, we're all allotted some money, it's just that this one is a significant amount without any fund. There are a lot of, there are a lot of townships that have active cemeteries, that have perpetual funds to take care of it.
It's the only way to take care of it.
Yes, it is. And that's the legal way. You're supposed to put in so much money that for every burial and every plot you sell, you're supposed to put a percentage in the perpetual fund. That rarely was done over the last years. And, and I, I know of a family, a couple of families that have come to me to, you know, and said, well, we paid for our headstone, but we paid cash, and I never saw their deposit. Do I have to fix that?
I think this time, unless anybody's got anything else, I'd entertain a motion regarding the Center Township trustee request of $300,000. Hearing no motion, I think it would, it would die. I do want to thank everybody for coming tonight.
Why the Republicans?
And if you, and if you let me finish, I will now open it up for public comment. During the public comment time, please come to the podium when recognized by the president, state your name and your address, and then begin your comments. Please no name-calling or personal attacks. We do need to have professionalism and courtesy, need to be displayed at all times. And I would request that each, each speaker would have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. I have sat here tonight, and I have listened to approved, 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 approved.
Can we get your name in that?
I apologize. Catherine Bright, I live at 4516 South Star Drive, Hunkley Estates. I've sat here tonight, and I've listened to approved, 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 approved. This is very, very important. Deb has dedicated every second of her life to this for the last year and a half. We have watched her come into the office, let me back up, I serve as her deputy chief. We have watched her come into the office exhausted. There's been many mornings that she's gotten possession of the cemetery, that she's there at 6:00 in the morning before she comes into the office. How many of you guys are at your jobs at 6:00 in the morning? Okay. She has dedicated her life to this. We feel the phone calls all day at the office since July, thanking her for what she has done. This is $300,000. Yes, that's a lot of money, but it's wide spectrum. It's just to drop the block of you guys for what you've given out here tonight. This is important to our community. Please, open up your hearts and just, it's like Deb said, this is a one-time request. Thank you for your time.
Ryan Cowgill, 1,200 North Corridor Road here in Marion. Boy, I could not be more disappointed than I am right now. I'm on the city council. We hear from the public before we take a vote. We don't just let something die and then say, okay, well, now we hear from the public. That blows my mind that that just happened. And, you know, and, and we promised as a council to give her the money if she went out and got it. So she goes through all the legal trouble, she gets ownership of it. We fulfilled our promise. And I know you guys say it wasn't individual, and can't speak for a board, but there was a body that night on recording that said, you go and get it, come back to us, we will find the money, we'll give it to you. The court order even says in there that based on the promises of the city and the county is why he awarded her to it. And, yeah, we're gonna give all this money for the inmates and this and that, but we're not taking care of the, but we have a United States Vice President out there, a descendant Betsy Ross, Indian Burial Grounds. This is the first cemetery, first cemetery in the state of Indiana, it's the oldest, over 200 years. The history out there is unbelievable. And, you know, I've served as a firefighter in this community, these people are, they come together, they're unbelievable for things that we need. And I can't believe that, you know, I tell you, I've not been more disappointed. And I hope people remember this, kind of voting time, I really do. Unbelievable.
Mr. Cowgill?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I said, thank you.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
My name's Bonnie Tinsley. I live at 1621 South Pennsylvania Street. So I go by the cemetery very often. I pretty much have grown up in that cemetery, unfortunately, due to my dad and my mom. My dad was born in 1920, my mom in 1924. She was a homemaker. My dad worked at Perilous Machine for over 30-some years. Before that, he fought in the war for our freedom, everyone here, during World War II. 1950s, the oldest child. Back in those days, they didn't have much. She died when she was 15 of cancer. That started the funeral proceedings, and where are we going to bury our firstborn child? And they picked, at that time, I double O F cemetery, they bought six graves, because they had six children, and they were afraid someone else would have cancer. Out of those six children, there's only two left, myself and a brother. Everyone else has died of either cancer or older age. My parents are over there. But they went every day, almost, because my mom couldn't hardly stand it. And we lived in that cemetery. I even rode bikes, sledged in that cemetery. There's been people since Deb has taken over, has had picnics with their loved ones in that cemetery just recently. People will go and sit and just talk, because it's peaceful. My husband works, he was in the National Guard, he works out of town, he works in Terre Bousque. Our money stays here in Grant County, okay? And I'm looking at your names, we vote. And I'm looking at your names. We vote and always have voted. I'm very disappointed in the decision because I'm just a regular Joe person. I don't have any high class. I'm just someone who coves over there. We always-
Your time's up. Thank you. I, me too. I'm a regular Joe. I just got elected to this. I served 12 years on Marion Community School Board. And then I took a break, but I felt called to come back. And it's a difficult decision. I, we all agree that it needs to be taken care of. It's just, $300,000 for the county is a lot of money. So.
You need to find it in your heart. You guys need to find it in your heart.
Thank you.
I am Ruth Ann Sumter, and I want to first take a minute and remind you all, all. Today is Constitution Day, which begins Constitution Week. Our forefathers had the good sense to make it that we could have these kinds of meetings, that we have the freedom of speech. You didn't give us a chance to speak before you vote. I have lived in this community the vast majority of my life. I lived in Marion, Grant County, Indiana. I have promoted many things in this community for the good of the community. Not for Marion, for Marion and Grant County. I am passionate, if you can tell, I am passionate about this cemetery, even though I have no blood relatives out there. I adopted an old man at the county home many years ago that I felt like he was my grandfather. And he is buried out there. Had it not been for Ben Needham and myself talking, that man would have been put in a pauper's grave. Because Ben knew the history, and I had the love for that old man. He is in a grave where his former wife purchased a lot for him. This, this county would not exist without our forefathers. The city would not be what it is without our forefathers. We finally have a trustee who's willing to put her blood, sweat, and tears into getting this cemetery back to being the point of pride that it used to be. G E L, I'm a member of V A R. I don't think they said that, but it, it goes along. My grandfather was in the I double O F. Not this cemetery, but he was a member. I'm a member of V A R. Ancestry means something to all of us, whether you study it, whether you're passionate about it or not. I think you did a great injustice to this community by voting before you heard from us.
But, and what I might say, though, is that tonight, every, every vote that we have done, we do a motion, we do a second, and then we do discussion. And then we ask the public for comment before we vote. And in this particular instance, there was no motion. And so that's why now I'm opening it up for public comment, even though it, it died. And allowing everybody to speak who's here.
You didn't ask us to speak.
I, I just, I did after, after-
After it died, after you decided.
Well, there was no motion and there was no second. Tonight-
You already made up your mind.
If you've been-
I didn't make up.
No, I didn't make up my mind. It was, everybody here can make a motion. That is sitting on the council.
Absolutely. All of you that have made up your minds, that's why it died. You made up your minds-
Mr. President, I would say that you guys should change how you do it, like the city. We hear from people before we ask for motions to vote on, because that's important, that you hear from the public. So if that's the way you do it, I would say, I would ask that you guys change that, where you hear from the public before you make your motions.
I, I always, I, I've been doing it, and, and it's been the short time I've been here in 2025, that, that we have been doing it after. This is the first time we've had something that died, I'll say, to speak.
Think about it. Open your heart and think, open your mind and think about it. Is that the proper way to do it? I assume my two minutes are over.
Yes, they are. Thank you. I appreciate your passion.
I care about this community, Marion and Grant County.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robert Muthais, 9547 West Delphi Converse. I live at the west edge of, of the county. And my sister Bonnie quoted that we were raised there. Yes, my mom visited the graves quite a bit. She, they missed her children. And while they were working on the grave, I learned to ride a bike out there, by the way, and it was a smooth road at the time. But up till a year ago, I thought I needed a four-wheel drive to get through that cemetery. Because I thought I was gonna tear my car up. They would pour cement in holes and then drive the truck through the hole. And it was big rugs and, and stuff like that. Anyway, it, it was a really a nice cemetery. It was well-kept. The mausoleum had the marvel, and it was just beautiful inside. But now it's vandalism and miss, somebody should be in jail, or there should be a couple of people in jail over there. Because there's been, you know, the money she mentioned is gone. And, and you don't steal that kind of money without someone behind bars. And I don't know what happened. Someone dropped the ball and that, but we, we, up till tonight, we just figured real quick, we count, stopped at 30. On my side, my wife's side, and my sisters-in-laws, we have 30 people out there, and I think we missed four or five. So we're representing that many people, and it's just been run down. And I, and you mentioned the other, other cemeteries. I've pretty much been around to a lot of the cemeteries, and they're in no way this condition. We've, we've traveled from the other side of the county to mow that, you know, four or five times this summer, because they just couldn't keep up. And either you just had grass that's high all around your grave, you know? And so we brought mowers and trimmers, and we've done it, you know, just on a regular basis for years now. And I would like to see some money go to it, and at the minimum, I'd like to see the county resources help her get grants. It would seem, seem like the minimal thing to do is try to use the resources of the county somehow to help her find money for this cemetery. She's got her work cut out for her. And I'm glad she's taken it on, because nobody else has cared for the last 40 years about that. My dad argued with them, why things were being sold, the fence and the cannons and different things. And, and there was rumor, and not rumor, but my dad was told by one of the guys that there was a drug thing going on, where they were selling it for the drug money. And I don't know for fact, but that's what people had said. And so there's, there's been a problem there for a long time, but it was a really nice cemetery. And, and the people are buried there. Had their trust in the county and the city that they would maintain that, that when they died, they knew what it looked like then. They would be ashamed right now.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
And I have four graves that I, this year, I considered selling. But I, since I've seen it here recently, I've kind of shelved that idea for a little bit, because there has been a definite improvement. But I don't know. It, it's not a final decision yet, but there's others, cemeteries that's been kept up.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you. And I'd like to keep making it for, in our least some help.
Hi, I'm Terry Young, Home Grassroom with Lawn Care. I help take care of the cemetery at this time. I live 324 South Mill Street, Fairmount. And I guess my big question, I know we can tell you stories of all of this, family members in there, not there. Do any of you have family members buried in this, this facility?
Yes.
So where do you think money should come from to take care of your family members? They paid the money in, correct? They bought the plots, they put the money into the cemetery. There should be money there. Well, the money's not there. So, so how are we gonna take care of your family members? Somebody's gotta pay for that. We pay taxes just like everybody else. We're here to try and take care of family members, not just ours, but yours. So, you know, I guess that's one thing just to keep in mind before you make your final decision, that, you know, these people need to be taken care of. They gotta be taken care of somehow. Somebody's gotta pay for that. It's, it's, nobody's gonna do it for free. So somebody has to be paid to take care of that. So that money's gotta come from somewhere, and, you know, Deb's doing a great job. She's working on getting grants, but, you know, as she spoke, the grants just take a long time. So she needs somebody that has the funds that can help out in the beginning to get things started, so we can keep this place the way we've got it back to now. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name's Mr. Tracy, Eric Tracy, 925 South Branson Street, Marion, Indiana. I just wanted to give you guys a different perspective of things, you know what I'm saying? You guys are a board. At least give her opportunity to come up with different ideas to take care of. We all got ancestors out there. We all can agree on that. But I want to look at the drug epidemic. We're in two-time drug epidemic. I know I'm in a drug rehabilitation program right now, trying to get my life right. So the money is going towards also, like, people in there trying to get their lives right, and putting their lot of sweat into getting a cemetery right. But the other day, I just walked by there. I picked up a couple of needles, and you see drug hair poaching all the time, high bushes and stuff now. They got the bushes out of there now. The lawn's cleaned up and everything now. So like, you know what I'm saying? We're cleaning up our city a little bit by little, you know, but also then again, you know, it means something to me going out there now, as I find out I do got ancestors out there. I did not know I had ancestors out there till I started getting to look around and stuff now. Means to me now that I know the importance of giving back and being a service to others. Because now I get to go clean that up and not only be a service to you guys' family members, but also to my other, to my family members. But also, we are in a bad, like, times where the drug problem is really bad, so like, we wanna put money into, you guys wanna put money into the, like, the trustees up there in the jail, where they only getting $2 a day up there, and they're not putting their integrity into cleaning that. They don't give a fuck what it looks like.
They're just upset. Excuse my language, my bad. They don't care what it looks like, you know what I'm saying?
But we care what it looks like, and you're also helping the rehabilitation part of the community. So I just want to say that with that.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Was that affirmative?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I'm coming to you via telephone. Good evening. My name is Brittany Riley, and I'm a Marion resident. I'm five weeks postpartum with my first child, and the reason I share that is because there's so many things I could be doing right now, but the belief I have in Deb Kane and how I feel about the upkeep of the cemetery is enough for me to postpone those things and come before you today. The money that's being discussed is not for playground equipment or malt or other things. It's, it's for people. The very people that gave us Marion. It doesn't matter if their body lies within a certain boundary or not. How can we argue a price on human life? Marion is rich in diversity, history, and love, and it all rests just a few miles from where you all are right now. The dead aren't dead until they're forgotten. To sum it up, please don't forget to remember. If you're wondering if the community cares or is passionate about this cause, please remember my voice and know that we are. I'm so pleased with the progress of the cemetery and the sort time that Deb has had it, and I look forward to even more progress. I know she is and will be a good steward of any resources that's entrusted to her. It takes a village, and that's us. We have to start somewhere, and that's here. The community is willing to help, but keep in mind, we're tired. The community consists of new moms, elderly men, busy individuals that when it comes down to it, they can't miss a kid's soccer game to go help. And it takes more than volunteerism. I hate hearing, well, it's not our fault that the money is depleted. Well, if we're taking that stance, it's not my fault that someone is in jail. But yet money is allocated to house them in jail and care for them.
Exactly right.
If the, if the current Marion community, such as inmates, government workers, et cetera, are worth it, then the dead are too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Riley. Mr. Duke?
Michael Duke, East Bradford, 5 Marion, Indiana, Mountain County. I didn't come here tonight prepared to make any comments, so what I say is, I'm not be very eloquent for a platform. But I would, would offer additional thought and maybe try to be more from an analytical perspective. This obviously is an emotional issue for a lot of people. It's also a community issue for all of the citizens, all the residents of, not only Grant County, Marion, Gas City, on down the line, every, every community in the city, I mean, in the county. I got here a little late, so I, I don't know what was discussed. I see there was an agenda item about the local income tax issue. And you all know I've had a concern over that over the past couple of years.
It's an FYI, too. We tabled that to the October 15th meeting.
I, I am aware, Mr. Duke.
Okay.
But just the same, I know that issue is there. I guess my thought here, in trying to be analytical about this, is that I know the community, the county, is in a hard place for money, for revenue, and you're looking for ways to raise revenue. But with this being a community issue, that is worthy to be funded by not only the county and the city, but all the cities in the community. I would propose to the county that if you would reconsider this issue, bring it back at the next, the next meeting for another round, and ask you all individually to search your soul for ideas or thoughts on how to address and find funds and what the little pot is that we have here that we're all discussing, and that you've been discussing through the budget process. And reconsider the issue. Do it analytically. It makes sense to me that you're gonna raise the local income tax rate by another 0.2% or whatever it's gonna be. Use that to find a way to offset and use funds in another pot. Maybe you said $4 million some dollars that commissioners are asking for there. Ask them to get a little bit up and reduce that number so that you can find, and other departments, too. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be cognizant, remind you, I, I call for you all to reduce the 26th budget by 5% over 25. I don't know where that stands at. And I don't think you necessarily know that either. But just the same, this is a worthy community issue that deserves a lot of brain power and a lot of sweat, and maybe some creative thinking. Please reconsider it.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you.
David Kane, 4622 South Cary Street. Most of you know that I am Deb's husband. I told her earlier today that I wasn't gonna speak tonight. I'd stay out of the fray, but circumstances forced me to be able to speak tonight. So what Deb didn't tell you is that she has been in contact with probably one of the premier fundraisers in the United States. Deb knows a lot of people, believe me. This $300,000 that, that she is asking for will extend her time that she can tap into those resources that she is trying to find, either through grants or through donations. And believe me, she knows a lot of people with a lot of money. But here again, she could not do anything because she didn't have possession of the cemetery until a couple of months ago. So everything had to be ho, put on hold all this time since May of last year, because she did not have possession of it. So let me give you a little bit of the history of what happened to that cemetery. I was president of the city council back in the 1990s when Dirk Guthie had control of the cemetery. He embezzled $7 million. I went to the county prosecutor, a county employee. A county employee. I went to the county prosecutor, a county employee, a county employee, and he refused to do anything about $7 million being missing, missing. A county employee. So I wonder whose fault it is? And it's like maybe a county employee's fault that he didn't follow up on this. $7 million vanished up a guy's nose.
Mr. Kane, your time is up.
Okay. You know where I'm coming from. I think you need to reconsider and look at the history of this cemetery. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think with the public comments, that is over. I think our next item on our agenda is our reports and resolutions, communications, committee reports. I don't know if there were any.
I'm going to have to deal with an executive session on my part.
Well, with that, we will look at our next upcoming meeting is Wednesday, October 1st. And that's a special meeting, and we'll be right here at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Mr. Scott, do we have a second?
Say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cardell. All in favor, please say goodbye by saying aye. Those who put the same sign, motion carries. Thank you.